Get it right. Over there. Yeah, it's just about. Long enough?
Yeah.
Push on the wheel. There you go. We stand with the flag of the United States of America to the Republic which is one nation, one God, invisible, and just for all. We'll go on, public participation. Wants to speak?
I do. I think I mentioned at the town meeting last month and I was at the public hearing also. I think probably later on in, in the years if we can probably retire the whole Kmart parking lot if we can. Cause a lot of puddles that they're all in poor shape right now. The whole thing's in poor shape. That's why I'm bringing it up to that. Tonight, public participation. One more, probably in the near future, we hope to see if we can try to get a bowling alley to be built here if we can. That's the only option I have here today.
So noted. Okay. So nobody else wants to speak? We'll move on to the articles, consideration. Are there any adjustments?
The only thing I would ask Mr. Chair is Eric is here representing the end of this department. You understand that Monsieur Abad wants to make a statement and so Eric has to leave to go for training.
Okay.
That's going on right now, so he asked if he could possibly have Monsieur Monsieur Abad speak first. That's pretty much it.
Article seven.
That'll be article seven. Is there a consensus that we would do that by board? Okay, in a minute we'll reflect that. Okay, we'll move to article first. Monsieur Abad. You want to address the board?
Yeah. For those that don't know me, my name is Ray Alaba from Marawaska, 593 Main Street, within a mile from the police station or the ambulance service, ambulance department. On the fifteenth of January, about ten of ten in the morning. My wife is having what we call now a seizure in my house. Somebody's supposed to pick us up at ten, we got a place to go. Well, first thing we were told is to call nine one one. I do call nine one one. And the responder's there and he asks all kinds of questions, I don't know. How is it and all that and your address and the formality I'm supposed. And I says, where am I calling? Says, you're calling Holton, me. Oh, okay. So I tell him what happened. So nothing goes, nothing happens, nothing happens. Minutes fly by, listen. If you've seen somebody have a seizure, you'll remember it the rest of your life. But if you don't, you don't want to know. Okay? That's my wife. Wait and wait and wait. The guy is very nice. Stay with me, stay with me, don't leave me, don't leave me. So all of a sudden I said, hey, listen, where's the ambulance? Where I'm looking? West? He says, I really don't know. What do you mean you don't know? Well, this is the dispatcher job. Well, can you talk to the dispatcher and see what's going on? Why I'm looking for the ambulance coming from town? I'm not half a mile, for those that know where I live. So. Gets the information, it's around the Caribou area. I said, what? It's around the Caribou area. Oh. Don't leave me, stay with me. The guy was nice. Stay with me, wait and wait and wait again and wait again. Now, I don't know the procedures, but that's what I'm looking for as to what's, what should have happened or not happened. So I'm waiting and waiting for the ambulance. I says, where is it now? He says, I believe it's in the Van Duren area. All the while, there's two here in Marawaska. Why no? I said. So finally to make it long story short. And he keeps telling me, don't leave me, stay with me, but as soon as the ambulance comes in your driveway, I'm gonna leave you. So the ambulance gets in my driveway, backs out, okay, he says, I'm gonna leave you. And in the between, he told me, is she forming at the mouth? I says, yeah, a little bit. Breathe with her. So I kept breathing with her. She was breathing and I was breathing on the phone, the way she was breathing. So that's what he said, he says, well, it's probably, probably a seizure. Okay, so I'm waiting and waiting, so they come. Now, my next question is. What happened? Am I wrong or somebody not doing their job? Cause I had to work and you know, you talk to people, if it had been five minutes late, the person would have been dead. Well, what I'm gonna do for you guys now, and I hope you follow through. If I have to authorize you, you and all of you, to get a transcript of the conversation I had with him and also a tape recording, if it exists, I will sign any document you want to, see if I'm lying, if I'm telling the truth. Do you understand what I'm saying? So this is where I'm at. What happened? Now, do you have somebody on standby or you don't have any on standby? And if you have somebody on standby, is it volunteer? Are they paid? Because when you get the transcript, I can't tell you exactly how long it took. But it took a lot of minutes for me to see my wife, seeing you know lazy boy with her high heels, her little skirt, those that know her, and we're waiting to leave at ten. Well, ten goes by and ten thirty goes by and all that, there's no ambulance in Marawaska. So my question is, what's the procedure? Is there a procedure? Well, what I'm gonna do with you guys, I don't want to see an answer tonight, I don't need an answer tonight. But some of you are gonna have to do your homework, then tell me. And tell the townspeople in Marawaska, is there a policy? There's no policy? Is there anything wrong? So. What happened? Now, I think he believed, but why is he here? I don't know, because there's not too many people that knew that I was coming here. And he was invited, I don't know why, because you're not supposed to know what happened. But for your sake and my sake. Something went wrong. And I don't want to, I don't want you to tell me or Mr. Picard, Ray Al can see me in a few days, I'll give you an answer. Nope. You're gonna get the answer. At another meeting here as to what happened or what should have happened or what, policy was broken or we didn't have a policy. That's what I'm here for. I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm just gonna tell you that on the side, two weeks later I had a massive heart attack, I ended up in Bangor on the plane. I'm telling you what happened. But I got to repeat it before. When you see somebody having a seizure, if you've never seen it, you don't want to see it. But that was my wife. I don't need an answer, I don't need a reply, but I'm just telling you, there will have to be a follow through. Am I right or are we wrong?
You, you questioned why Mr. Sierra's here, he's the ambulance director?
Yeah, but I mean.
So when we have an emergency in the ambulance department?
Okay.
He gets invited.
Okay. Because Mr. Picard talked to me at Chop and Save, I think, two weekends, two weekends ago. And he said, well, in front of us, what, the ambulance, that's all I said. But, okay, that's, that's the reason. That's all right, about that. But I'm not, you, you cannot, you can't, tonight, right here, you cannot tell me, give me an answer. I don't want an answer from you. I don't want an answer when you find out what happened. And put yourself in my position. All of you, put yourself in my position, how you're supposed to feel.
You mentioned the date was January fifteenth?
January fifteenth. I thought it was the fourteenth, fifteenth, but fifteen was on the Friday and somebody was picking us up at ten o'clock, we were going someplace, but we never made it. When he came, I said, back up over there, cause the ambulance is coming.
Nine fifty A M.
Yeah, about ten, ten of, on the fifteenth, ten of ten in the morning.
So you, do you estimate that you had to wait an hour?
What? The only thing you're gonna find out, I don't know how it works, the dispatcher, the transcript or whatever takes the message, you're gonna, they're gonna have a documented date, an hour as to when the phone call was made. I'm assuming this is public knowledge, I'm assuming, if it's not, I will be more than happy for you to prepare a paper or the legal professional or whatever, but I'm gonna give you permission to get a transcript of the conversation and the verbal conversation that I have with the judge. Don't blame the guy in Holton, but when he told me, says, where's the ambulance? Well, I believe the ambulance, the dispatcher, maybe I'm wrong, it's in Caribou, I don't know, I don't know.
That's what he told you?
That's what I believe he told me. But all the while, there's two ambulances over here in Marawaska, not only mine. You know the yellow house on the right hand side going before the trust with the store? That's my house. I'm not far, eh? But I had to wait for an ambulance coming from Caribou.
Can we hear from Eric?
Yeah, Eric. I mean, I'd have answers to all this right now. I'd have answers to this right now. I mean, it's hard policies and how things work. I mean, I don't know.
Well, you tell them, you tell the policy to them. Then I'll be more than happy to come back because I think the townspeople have a right to know what happened.
Yep, you're right with that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I thought the camera would be working, but I don't think it's working.
Yeah, it is.
Oh. So. I don't want to be a pain. And like I said, you don't want to go, you don't want to go through what I went through. So I'm hoping that one of these days you can, first of all, if you, if you want signed document that I authorized the conversation or the transcript, I don't have a problem with that. Maybe he can get it, I don't know, maybe you can get it, maybe you can get it. But if you need paperwork stating, well, you prepared the document, I'll gladly sign it as to when I called, you will get the time that I called. They will give you the time when he got home.
On that, on that to date, did the ambulance from Marawaska show up?
It's the ambulance from Marawaska that was in Caribou.
But it was in Marawaska.
Man, it was caught on.
Okay, so, okay.
There wasn't that took her to Fort Kent.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But my point is, again, I have to repeat it. There was a break in communication of something. It could have been the dispatcher, it could have been the responder, but the responder told me, the guy that answered the phone, he asked me all kinds of questions and all that, the litany of what I gotta answer, where I live and all the address and all that. He told me that he's not, I believe he told me he's not the dispatcher, it's somebody else the dispatcher. Some, and, and was I supposed to call the station? I don't think so. I called nine one one.
From your, a landline?
From my house, landline, not a cellphone.
Not a cellphone, okay. So Eric, you, just generally speaking.
Yep. When you call nine one one, don't call the station, that's the worst thing you can do because if they're on a call, there's nobody there, no one's gonna answer that phone. So that's why when, when you first call there, our answering machine will tell you, if you have an emergency, hang up and dial nine one one, because you don't want to waste any more time. So you call nine one one, nine one one will dispatch us. And that is typically, if you call from a landline, it's the dispatching in Bangor that, that picks up and then they transfer to Arista County Sheriff's Department who will call you, recalls us, okay? And that morning, the ambulance happened to be out on a call, they had transported somebody to Caribou. I don't know all the details as far as our mutual aid services, that, that is information I can certainly find out from before we, but our ambulance was on the way back from having already transported somebody to Caribou that morning. Unfortunately, there are patients that, that request that and we, we kinda can't refuse that here. And they were on their way back. We are having staffing shortages right now, we're having difficulty with staffing, staffing standby. We do have a policy, a standby policy, that we have a crew that works, two guys or two members that work at the station twenty-four hours a day. And then on most, some days, we have a backup crew sitting at home on call as well. Okay? That doesn't always happen during the day because we're just, we had a shortage. Back in January, we had a full-time member that had without which shoulders surgery, we were just struggling to fill those voids for standby. So typically, when our first ambulance is out on a call, if there's no backup crew, we call our mutual aid services, which can be Fort Kent or Van Bier, them too are suffering shortages right now. This is a nationwide problem we are experiencing right now. Nobody wants to be EMT anymore. We're having a hard time finding people. We are being proactive and we'll let, let you know we're being proactive, we got two members that got certified. Yep, we got, and they know, well, some of them know, there's some new board members, but you know, there are two staff members, Chris and Jessica, that became instructor coordinators last fall and we're hoping to put up an EMT class here soon. We're hoping to get some local people that are interested in taking an EMT class. It's for times and all that, I can certainly get that information. We do our run reports, we write down the time you get the call, the time we got to your house, the time we left your house, all those times are recorded on our electronic run form. So that is something I can certainly get if you need to. That's where we're at, Mr. Alaba. I'm very sorry that has happened. Unfortunately, there are a lot of things that are out of our control right now.
No, no, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with him, not disagreeing with him. You know, you always hear the story, if the ambulance would have been five minutes late, he'd have been dead or she'd have been dead. You're not talking five minutes now. You're not talking ten, you're not talking fifteen, you're not talking twenty minutes. You're taking a long time. And that's where I'm at, I'm being told, it's a shortage of staff. It very well could be. But if there's a shortage of staff, you still have to run the ambulance service. And, and for me, when he told me Caribou area, oh, jeez, jeez. It just didn't ring. And I thought about it after, I said, was I supposed to call the office or was I supposed to call somebody? I don't think it's up to me. But that's what happened. So I'm assuming, like I said, he says he's gonna get the transcript and the verbal, verbal discussion. If, if you have, you want it authorized by me, I don't have a problem with that. If he can't get it, but he should be able, and if he can't, I'll be more than happy to.
Eric, to answer your question, around that time period too, I think we had some employees who were out because of COVID. We had one employee.
I know we had one that was out for surgery, we may have had one out that was for COVID too around that time, I forget.
Well, it was not that the person had COVID.
Right, but they were.
The private, the regular workplace wouldn't allow the employee to continue to be an on-call person for us. Okay, so that was, that was another employee that was there, if you will.
What you're saying, I agree what you're saying. But put yourself in your ordinary position, anybody that saw what I saw. So I'll go for you out. And the story about being short, I agree, that's a national situation. Everybody's short. But. There's still, there's still what happened to me. Maybe I'm being selfish, I don't think so. So I, whenever you get the information, don't, don't send me a letter in the mail stating that this is it. Get me back here. I don't care if it's a week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, a month. Get me back here. Then you can tell myself and the public as to, don't come up with a, with a complete answer, shortage of staff. You know, true, there's shortage of staff, but there's still the budget.
So you want to try finding with it?
How come? Or should I have called somebody or should he have been notified by the dispatcher or? I don't know what works.
Richard, I got. Question?
Uh, a statement. So I know, and Gary can say exactly how long ago, but a few years ago, we did switch from local dispatching, where the office was local to town, to the Arista County Sheriff's Office. And by switching, that drastically increased our services that we get from dispatching. And they do dispatch locally, so when they're in Holton and they key up their microphones, they're talking directly to our rigs and our, our guys here in Marawaska. So there's a direct connection. So when you call them and they dispatch us, it's people sitting at desks side by side, one person's on the phone taking the information while the other person's on the radio talking to the rig. So that way they can talk to the rig and talk to you at the same time and make sure that the data is going back and forth. And, and that part of things has, has been amazing. So yes, you do talk to somebody out of town, but they have direct connection to our emergency responders here.
What happened that day, ran out of electricity or ran out of something because there was no direct, I didn't know, Ray did, had the courtesy, I said, Abad, you know, the ambulance in Caribou is gonna take you forty-five minutes before you get the ambulance. Nobody, nobody, nobody told me except one time, but like I said, he was very nice. The guy told me, kept telling, telling me, don't hang up on me, don't hang up on me, breathe. Do what she's doing, what is she doing? What is she, is she conscious? She was not conscious, she was out.
I, I can assure you whether there was not a dispatching problem, I'm sure as soon as the nine one one was called and dispatch was notified that they contacted Midone, which is the first ambulance right away. They knew when they were in Caribou that they had another call and they had to take off and they took off and I'm sure they went pretty fast. And, and you know, I understand Monsieur Abad, I really, I understand your frustration, I get that. But they were on their way as soon as you called nine one one, they pushed that button and they radioed to them and, and they told them that where to go and what they had. And, and again, I'll get those times, if you guys just requested, you don't let me know exactly what you need and I can get that for you. And we can hopefully rectify or Mr. Hebert's answers on these questions.
Thank you and I hope that you understand that. I don't want to hear it in writing, I want to hear it verbal, probably text and writing has two dates and hours, but I mean, you asked me a while ago how long did it take? Well, take you from Caribou to Marawaska, you can go slow down somewhere, you can't do sixty miles an hour all the way. It's okay. Not everywhere I live, you know, my phone number?
We'll go back to you.
I'll be back, I'll be back here. All right? Thank you, thank you for your time. I still don't understand how come.
Are there any other adjustments, ladies?
I have something for. I still notice our personnel handbook hasn't been updated since two thousand seventeen. So I think we will need to make some adjustments to it, so I don't know how we can work that out, if you want subcommittee or committee or. Cause I'm sure there's changes that need to be made or. Cause it's quite a few years without any.
Yeah, and the last, the last modification or amendment to the personnel policy was in respect to EBT policy pretty much. And, and so as far as the, the meat and potatoes of the personnel policy hasn't been touched in quite some time. So we'd be due for a good look at it, to see if it meets the state penal, if it meets.
Yeah, sure, some federal regulations have changed.
The last time it was updated by a subcommittee?
There was a, it started before I'm on here, there was a little bit of a committee that worked on EBT policy and I think it was the town employees and a board of selectmen or or two. So I think that would probably work well, have the HR director and myself and a couple of board members and maybe we could solicit the, somebody, a department head or two to work with us to kind of go through the EBT, the personnel policy, see what might need some tweaking and make recommendations for the full board.
Was that a motion that you wanted to make?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we work some sort of subcommittee to update our, our existing personnel policy.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second, yeah.
Second, yeah. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I would just say that you want to, at this meeting or at this future meeting, appoint a couple of board members to be on there, would you want to do that now?
However, I know it wasn't an agenda item, I just wanted to bring it out so that it's something we could discuss.
You want to add it in an agenda item next month, to appoint somebody as a committee?
Yeah, so we can probably give some.
We'll add that in an agenda.
Yep.
And the others, I.
Well, there's still a motion.
Oh, sorry, forgot about that.
Good. Is that it for discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those against? Motion carries?
And the other issue is the library. It seems to me that every time we bring that up, it's around budget time and it's too late and we don't have any chances to review the agreement that we have with them and what can be done, so. That's something else I would like to address, either some sort of committee or something to work with them or.
Gary and I had had that discussion this, this past week, I think it was, and our thoughts was that maybe two people from some of this committee could meet with their board just to find out what's going on, what their five-year plan is or whatever, and then bring it back to this committee? Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Who's on that board?
I am right now.
Do you have a copy of that charter or anything?
I had given it. I had given it to Gary, to all the, the copies that I had, so he can make copies.
It's in my office.
Should we take a look at it?
Yeah, see, it has everything.
Do we need copies for us?
Absolutely.
Okay. On that, you want a motion on that or?
It's not necessarily just, uh, that's something.
I think there's consensus on that, that, wanna move forward on that to
I don't wanna wait till budget time.
Presentation in the future for the, in the library.
Yeah, 'cause I'd be interested in meeting with them and going over that.
Okay. Minutes reflected.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing done, move on to Article Two to consider board minutes. First minute for May twenty-five meeting.
I can make a motion to accept May twenty-five meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Second. Are there any discussion on those minutes? Everybody has read them? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the May twenty-five minutes? Any more discussion, all those in favor? Those against? Motion carries. Move on to the June fifteen, uh, minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Jason, seconded by Chris to approve the June fifteen minutes. Everybody has read them? Are there any, is there any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Against, motion carries. June twenty-three meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jason. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Those against, motion carries. That's it for Article Two, move on to Article Three to consider the treasurer's warrants. Are there treasurer's warrants that have, they all been signed here?
Yeah.
So we need a motion on that? Okay, a motion to approve all the treasurer's warrants?
Yeah, I make a motion to. Sorry, I, I make a motion to approve all the treasurer's warrants.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Chris. Any discussion on that? Hearing done, all those in favor? Those against, motion carries. Move on to Article Four. To consider a liquor license renewal application for Shay Helen's located at one-one-nine twelfth Avenue. They waived the liquor.
Yes.
So then, and there's no issues in the past?
There have been no issues, it's straightforward and all.
Okay.
Based off that, I'll make a motion that we approve that application for the owner.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second that. Any more discussion on that? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Against, motion carries. Article Five. Consider catering permit application Big Ritz Burgers and Wings located at fourteen Country Lane, Road, Madawaska, Maine. Do you have the date on that?
Yeah, hold on, it is.
September twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty?
Through thirty to midnight.
Yeah. Twenty-twenty?
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, yes, right. There's a zero with a one through it.
Okay. Is there a motion for that?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries. Article Six. To consider a catering burn application for Big Ritz Burgers and Wings located at one-sixty-seventh Avenue, Madawaska, the multipurpose building. And that is for a private event?
That is a private event, uh, on that date of
Seven, ten, twenty-one.
From five to one AM.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that, Chris West?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Jason, seconded by?
Second.
Chris?
It doesn't matter.
Is there a motion? By Chris?
I made a motion.
Yeah, there's a second. Second. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Yeah.
Against? Motion carries. Article Seven's been taken care of, we'll move on to Article Eight. Consider a request from Mrs. Canad for one-day use of the Madawaska Farmers Market Pavilion. Do you have the date on that too?
Yeah, it is.
July ten.
July ten from, um.
Twelve to one.
Twelve to one. This is not a typical use of, of the farmer's market. And so the violas of the farmer's market are, are pretty straightforward for produce and farmers and people make things and sell things, you can buy things and resell things. It's not a, a currently approved use. Um, so I don't have any need to, to approve these, as I've been authorized, uh, these requests for using the farmer's market for other purposes. And so that's why I'm putting it in front of you.
So does it?
Is this the first request of this company?
Uh, there have been requests to do stuff there in the past, uh, by other entities. I wouldn't have any objection to it, um, I, you know, it's not going to interfere with the market, the market's not full, obviously, so I wouldn't have any concern with it.
Is it stated what she's planning on doing or I?
It is a, um, this is on here.
America needing Fetsma.
The Public Prayer Valley.
Oh, Public Prayer.
Yeah. Yeah. We did, um, if, if it helps you, uh, last year, we got requests from somebody to do a similar prayer kind of thing. Um, and the board approved that loca- that happened over at the, uh, Boy Scout property near the Leventon, uh, Main Street, uh, Leventon Avenue, French Street.
Yeah.
And that's where the board said you could, you could go in and get set up to do that event. But that was more than one hour or half a day. It was, it was, uh, potentially a weekend thing. And so the person had a tent they wanted to set up and, and so the board directed them to set up over there. And our guidance on, um, religious activities on municipal property, there's nothing that prohibits that. So we can get a legal permit on that. The, uh, legal, MMA legal, I'd, uh, suggested it might be helpful in the future, uh, if the board adopted some of, more of a permitting process for entities or people who would want to request the use of, of public property to have a process that's, um, similar for everybody, you know? So that's something that we could possibly take a look at in the future if we wanted to. But I don't have any concern with this, I just didn't feel like I had.
That was from MMA?
Yeah.
Did they have an example of one?
Permit?
No.
Does she, does she state at all why she wants to have it there?
It's a nice facility. So there's roof, it's beautiful location. Why wouldn't you wanna have one there, I guess?
So with this, I understand the farmer's market's not full, but if somebody decided who's paid their registration to the farmer's market, are we blocking off that gate so they can't go there or are we still gonna allow them to go?
That would be my only question is if we have somebody that has a seasonal fee that's paid, would they, would they be able to set up and vend out of that?
There is, there is, there's room for ten vendors in there. Ten, ten by ten areas, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, inside the roof of the farmer's market. And so are we gonna have ten vendors? I don't think so.
I'm, I'm not concerned about the ten vendors, I'm concerned about if one or two show up that day, are we allow, are we gonna allow them to set up or are we gonna say, no, it's booked? That's my concern.
No, she, I don't think they're, she doesn't wanna take the whole thing.
Okay.
She just wants a piece of, like a part of it in the front.
Okay.
Okay, I got it.
That's important.
Yeah. That's fine, as long as we're still allowing those who pay for their.
Nope.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of it for, um, this prayer rally.
Yeah. Okay, seconded by?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Against, two against. Article Nine, to consider comments by Kim and Scott Levack from eight forty-two Main Street regarding the site work to their property during the sewer line upgrade project of twenty twenty.
Well, the date's wrong, it's twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, okay.
In the fall.
Gary, make your presentation?
Well, you wanna hear?
Where's your?
Uh, you guys are aware what happened, uh, at our house back in September, August, September, what last, of two thousand nineteen. McGillens Construction Company was doing work supposedly, I thought, for the town of Madawaska, changing sewer pipes from eight forty-six Main Street to our house. My in, my father-in-law's house to our house. Working extremely, extremely slow, these people, but anyways. They, this, one day we were like, huh, our pet rats died. Or we don't know, there's a lot of stuff going on on the side of the road and, um, maybe there's something wrong with our water, 'cause how can this be happening at the same day? Come to find out, we hit our sewer pipe. Contaminated our well, um, I have some papers saying it got contaminated, but they're saying that McMac was not credible. They didn't wanna take it, so, um, McGillens hired somebody from, it was Waterville, to, and it came out that the water was okay. But then Marquee Well Drilling and I've ca- I've talked to, um, Sage Bushu in Augusta, saying that depending how much sewage went in, um, it could be there for a long time. So I says, well, we're not gonna wait and see if the well's gonna, if it, you know, if it's contaminated, if it's still good or not, or and we waited and we waited, I drove back and forth through town every single day trying to find everybody's hiding spot. Talked to Gary often, said they were working on it and we ended up paying for all the damage. And when he, when the McGillens put back the pipe, we were home flooded, we were, um, what's the word? Cleaning our pipes, let it all drain out. Come to find out, the pipe he replaced was full of rocks, so it flooded in my house. So, um, what else do I have to say about it? It was ongoing. Uh, the side of the road, it got, didn't get well, uh, wasn't correctly well done. So we had water going into our basement of the garage underneath, which was seeping into the house basement. So, uh, Scott took it upon himself to, uh, do a drain tile in front of the garage, 'cause we've never ever had water coming down like we've had. And it was one time, 'cause we even tried to grow lawn in front of the house and we couldn't. And I asked Gary, I says, can, is there something you can do to put on the side of the road so water doesn't wash out the womb and the seeds every time it rains? Says it's not a town problem, it's a state problem. So I made it my problem. I hauled with the four-wheeler, I'd go get some rocks at Shay, uh, dust rocks at, uh, Pelci's and go bury it there. Tap it on, put it on the side of the road to try to do anything to stop the water from coming down our yard. And, um, I have receipts of over eleven thousand twenty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents of receipts and I know I have a lot more that I don't have. And why did we have to pay for all this damage? And I know that supposedly the McGillens, they want nothing to do with it. And you go see lawyers about it while it's all conflict of interest and, oh, I don't know anything about it and we would've had to go down to Bingo or Downstate with it. So then why, and so this comes back again, why did I have to pay for it?
So who's been involved? Talked to lawyers, you said?
Yeah, it was all conflict of interest. Yeah.
I have another question, is, has your homeowners insurance looked into this?
No. I did not, uh, put it on the homeowners. I didn't, uh, no.
Jason?
So I did go out and visit the property a couple of times, um, even in the rain. Uh, and i- it does look like the job wasn't completed correct, in my eyes, of course, Kevin could probably, he's been in the road work longer than I have, he can probably correct me, but i- if you look straight down the street, you can see that all the other properties have a nice berm at where the road meets the grass and the water comes down the street. But where the work started, you can see that the road now goes flat from the road, straight down. Um, and the water is coming off the road and going directly down, straight to their house, which is something that wasn't there before.
And in front of my in-law's house, there's rocks coming from under the road. For how long was that happening for?
Well, the, the state fixed it.
Yeah, no, the state fixed it, but they weren't too happy about it. So I think they said, well, we're gonna send the town of Madawaska the bill, 'cause, you know?
Because it was eating one, just, uh, two feet deep.
Yeah, so in this year, I says, we said, no, we're not touching, 'cause we've done, I spent a thousand dollars in loom, uh, three hundred and, let's see here, trying to supply for two hundred and seventeen dollars of seeds. And that doesn't count the bags at Central that I picked up every, every other day to try to get my grass growing, growing at the house. So we said this year, we're not touching it. It's, we're done, like, if the road doesn't get fixed, nothing's gonna work well at our house. And, um, there was one time though, um, Gary and Shay, uh, what's it, Brent?
Brent.
The engineer. So picture, I don't know if you guys saw that, I have a picture of my house, but the wall, he, we have a drain tile on the left side of our house going down. They wanted to, Brent wanted to connect the, the water that's coming down, connected to our drain tile, but our garage is on this side. So how would the drain tile here stop the water all over there? It wouldn't. I'm sorry, it just, doesn't make any sense that engineer would think that way, 'cause it, and, yeah, so I don't know. So that's why he took it upon himself and he made a drain tile in front of the garage. They had to cut up in the tar and, you know, put that all together. And now, now that we cut into the driveway last, last year, nobody wants to come tar in our driveway. I'm like, even if you have extra, come look, please, like, deliver some, you know, some asphalt. I've been running around lately, every time there's somebody, you know, nobody wants to come, 'cause it's too much of a small job. So it's like, I'm done. So who should take responsibility for all this? I, to me, it's like, why us? I didn't ask for this, I didn't ask for a new well, I didn't ask for, you know, for any of this to happen. And I shouldn't have to put it on homeowners and have my rate go up. It's not us. It's the construction company that screwed up everything.
But you also signed a release from the contractor that did that, right? I have a, I have a.
Yeah, and she, she gave us a thousand dollars. So we, so she have, I mean, P S. I have eleven thousand dollars, I'm not trying, that was afterwards when I tried to sue and she said, well, she came over our house and she says, you know what? They're all lying to you. She says, the reason that we didn't want, uh, Brent and supposedly Gary, they didn't want us to do the work is because they didn't do it the same, they didn't, no, the McGillens were gonna do it a different way than the, um, engineer wanted it. And which is the way we did it, go in the front of our house with the drain tile and, so she gave us a thousand dollars, whatever. But that's it.
Look, you've signed a release, so that means that they're not liable anymore.
Well, not anymore, no.
Yeah.
But we were, everybody was saying there's nothing they can do, then I found out that, yeah, go fight the town. So that's why I'm here.
Mr. Chair, I don't know what disagreement is between Levacks and McGillens for the construction company. I don't see where this becomes a town issue at this point, I don't.
Yeah, but who hired the town, who hired the McGillens?
I understand what they're dealing with, I don't, I don't think this is something that comes back onto the town with an agreement signed that says.
That was between McGillens and myself.
The responsibility, bending their fore.
But what did the town do wrong?
They didn't do anything for us.
I came, I came to see Gary, I don't know how many times, and I asked him for a meeting between me and her, him and Dawn, and the engineer, and the McGillan Construction Company.
Never happened.
How many times, and I never got a meeting. We're just getting put in on the back burner. Well, I, I can't speak for the McGillens, but they have an agreement here, so they're probably, had contacted the lawyer and said, you know, this is settled.
Yeah, but that's fine with them, but I was told, Gary had said to me, that the McGillens weren't fully paid and that's their punishment. Well, why are we getting, you know? Why am I getting punished and having to pay eleven thousand dollar bill? Okay, minus a thousand.
We, when, when McGillen broke the line, the sewer line, and there were issues there and there were issues with your damage to your basement, in your bathroom, we, we pushed hard on McGillen to make sure that they would work with you guys to resolve those issues. That was an issue between the contractor, that, they owned that project, that was theirs, okay? And we have an engineering firm to administer that project.
Okay.
So we pushed on those, on, on McGillen to fix those issues. But the last of it right here, the work and the issues with the water sheeting off US Route One, McGillen would. But the last of it right here, the work and the issues with the water sheeting off US Route One, McGillan wa- was not gonna go back there because you do-
No, no, that was even before that, Gary, that was at the end, that was last year.
At the end, but, but the wa, but the issue with the, the water coming across your property, McGillan was not allowed to go back and fix that. And this was a settlement agreement between you and them, to say, fine, if we're not gonna be able to go fix that, and you wanna do it yourself, we need you to sign a waiver, because we're not gonna be responsible if that work is not, is not up to par.
Of course not, because they said that you didn't get paid by you guys.
No, the, McGillan did a lot of different work for us at a lot of different phases, okay? We, we are done with McGillan, we withheld payment from them, and we kept pressure on them to make sure that things were getting fixed. When this was done, with, between you, the two of you, our work was done.
Yeah, so you're, so you're, that's what you guys are telling me, and this is bullshit. I had to frigging get a loan from my father-in-law to get a goddamn new well at my house. No, it's not enough. You guys are not the ones that fought all last summer, and busted your ass off. Luckily, I had my in-laws doing all this work by ourselves. No goddamn way. No. That's it. Take it out of my, well, I don't know. You guys have comments, is it? 'Cause we didn't even get a bottle of water at our house, it's like Kevin bought them.
He couldn't have done his job in the beginning and, and pushed harder, it would've got resolved right away. But he didn't do it.
And now the state's pissed at you guys too, or pissed at somebody, 'cause that work didn't ever got finished. They fixed in front of his house with the rocks, and they came all alongside the road, and says, yeah, we own, we own all up to the telephone pole. She's, don't tell us I have to pay all my guys to come fix that all up.
But that is the state approved. I mean, we've heard your comments, but we're limited, we can't do anything else. There, there's no liability to the town here.
You guys hired these goddamn idiots. Oh, like...
So, when, when, when we hire a contractor, I'm sure we have certain regulations, they have to have liability insurance, they have to have-
On the interview?
So that if they screw something up, it does fall on them to repair it.
I think without this document, you'd have everything you need
Yeah.
to carry forward this
From whom?
wi- with McGillan themselves.
Well, we, we've been trying for how long?
Not while they're with you. But I think the problem was that you signed the document, that, that puts the, puts a stall on-
So what was a, okay, so if I wouldn't have had that, what would've happened? What, the town would've ran after them to come finish the work?
I mean, possibly. Well, you probably would've had legal standing.
Right, you, I think you would've had more than what you have. Now, this, this pretty much takes all your meat and potatoes out of, out of what occurred, because you agreed that you released everybody from responsibility, except for our town.
It was just, it was for that job to do the drain tile. It wasn't for the front of the house, it was for the drain tile job. Is it specified in that letter that it's for, it was for the drain tile?
No.
I didn't read any part of that in here, I just said, this is all the work we've done really near, and we've done with this work.
Pretty much covers everything, from unknown property damage, unknown personaging, all other damages of whatever kind resulting, or to result from all work performed. It, it releases them from everything, which it, it gives us no, no leverage on anything, so without anything else, I don't know if there was any, nothing actually we can take.
Yeah. The chances are, it's just prepared by a lawyer.
Not every lawyer from here to Hilton, or that were taken, so I didn't, not knowing how this all works, and not getting help from anybody, us coming here every, almost every other day, running after Dawn, running behind the, found the hiding spot behind Central Building every day, trying to get help to... Oh yeah, you're gonna get a new well, we're gonna put one, and the next minute, oh, no, we're not, and it was like up and down for I don't know how long. And then we waited for the seat first, and I talked to you last year, I think that a Gillan they're supposed to come and see. Oh, anytime, anytime, they never showed up, but that was before that got signed.
So...
So the town says, love them, and, all right.
So, uh, am I, am I right, did I hear right, that McGillan was not fully paid for the job that was done?
No, McGillan has been paid for their job, the contract is closed.
Okay, so there was no money held back?
So why was it that you had sent that to me when I had talked to you, I, you said to me?
'Cause when there were issues,
Mm-hmm.
we wanted to make sure that they got resolved, we worked with them to make sure that they took care of those issues, such as the broken pipe, and those other concerns, okay? But when it came to the landscaping,
Okay.
okay? You signed off on that.
Okay, but, all right, so then the side of the road, what happens? That's not landscaping, that's not, that's a state road.
Exactly, so it, it doesn't belong back on us, and...
But still, you, you hired McGillans.
I think if, if you didn't understand everything that was in the document when you signed it, then, you know, it, it's unfortunate, but it pretty much takes away any authority from the town to do anything else with that, once, once this was-
No, but the town, is, is the town Madawaska listed in there?
Once this was signed, no, because the agreement was between you and them. And so, the, the town was actually doing you a favor, Gary was doing you a favor by holding back, trying to ensure that they were gonna come through on their end. Or that would give resolve.
No, because they said, no, he said, well, either do it yourselves, or, or do you want the McGillans to come back, as if we wanted the McGillans back on our property.
So that was your choice, and then your other choice was to sign-
Well, no, we had spoken about it, though.
So your other choice was to do that, and then sign this document, which pretty much terminates any reliability back on the town. So, Mr. Chair, I don't see any more action on this, and I think we should move on to the next article.
Yeah, move on, yes.
Okay. No action of articles. Move on to Article ten, Consider A Request To The Town Reserve Fund For The Project.
That's fine, you forget losers.
Oh, yeah, this one, Kevin's here for that.
Kevin.
Your Article ten for, that had to do with Acacia Street?
Yes.
I drove by, saw the, that wall, the phone number. Who owns that old house over there?
That's, uh, Mr. Buta.
Buta?
Yeah. What happened was, is the middle of winter last year, there was a retaining wall that was made out of cement blocks, and over the years of just wear and tear on the, from the elements of salt and the elements that the blocks have deteriorated, when we were cleaning the sidewalks off with our little Bobcat scraper, it just let go and the wall crumbled down. So, now I'm asking for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to repair that wall. And if you look, there's photos of of the damages, and then I got an estimate or a proposal from Ed Pelletier and Sons for the repair of that.
And that's just transferring funds from his, from the reserve account, Route Logic Reserve. You're just asking for authorization?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve the eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll start it.
Set it. Any more discussion on that article?
Is that, is that the whole wall from?
From thirteen to twelve Avenue.
The whole thing?
Yes, we're gonna remove the railing, they're gonna come in, do the digging, install the blocks, we're gonna reinstall the railing, straighten it out, and then it's gonna get hot thawed.
Okay. If you have this motion second, any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Article, that is, to consider the twenty twenty-one Town declared certified ratio for main revenue service property tax division.
So this is something that's done every year, um, certified ratio, I'll, uh, give a rundown, quick summary of, of what that, what that is, um. Every year, uh, in every municipality, uh, the property is sold, and main revenue services property tax division looks at the properties that are sold, and they do a study. Uh, they cost out all the anomalies, the family transactions, when that might've been worth a hundred thousand, that sold for fifty bucks, and things like that. Those family transactions are cost out, and they, they look for trends, um, to try to determine what the state valuation is going to be, right? And the state valuation, the state has their valuation, our municipalities, we have our own valuation for the purpose of collecting taxes, and oftentimes, there's a gap between the two, um, and that's, you know, that can grow over a period of time, which would trigger a revaluation, okay? And our last one was done roughly a decade ago. So, uh, Madawaska's, the, the certified ratio does a couple of things. It helps to calculate the homestead exemption, so if your states, this year, the state's, uh, homestead exemption value takes twenty-five thousand dollars of assessed value of your property, your home property. The homestead exemption is multiplied by the town certified ratio. So, uh, if your property was, if the certified ratio is at a hundred percent, the homestead exemption is, is twenty-five thousand. If we're certified at a hundred and ten percent, then the twenty-five thousand is, is multiplied by a hundred and ten percent. And so the, the higher the certified ratio we use, the bigger the, the homestead, uh, exemption reimbursement um, to the, or deduction for the taxpayer. The other thing that the certified ratio does is it increases the amount of our Betty, the value of our Betty equipment. 'Cause our Betty equipment is depreciated down, every, everything in Betty, that, all business equipment that is put into the Betty program, business equipment tax exemption program, runs through a program, people, uh, businesses have to declare their assets by April one every year, and those assets are depreciated on a sliding scale, or whatever calculation the assessing agent uses, uh, but it is then also multiplied by the certified ratio. So, um, we have always used the maximum certified ratio that we can use to, to leverage the highest homestead reimbursement for our taxpayers, for those who have a homestead exemption, and also to leverage the highest Betty reimbursement, uh, from the state domain on, on property. Because property that is in Betty, we don't get fully reimbursed for, like we would otherwise if we were taxing it straight as, like property tax. We only get reimbursed sixty-seven and a half percent. It's different from each town, the, the reimbursement rate can vary, um, depending on how much property, personal property or equipment is in a town proportionate to their overall tax base. When it's a large burden on the town, there's a lot of property in Betty, uh, you qualify for what is called an enhanced Betty, and it gives us a slightly higher reimbursement rate, I think we were at sixty-seven and, or sixty-eight and a half percent last year. Of what we would normally get if we taxed that property, and, we got a check from the taxpayer. So, one way that we use the Betty program, uh, to try to get the most out of it, the reimbursement, is to put in for the higher, um, Betty reimbursement. I gave you three years of Betty, of certified ratio history. You can see three years ago, we were at a hundred and twenty percent, and, and we're going down slowly, so now, um, the hundred and twenty percent was at a hundred and ten, and of, of certified ratio, what the state says, and then we can certify it ten percent higher than that, right? So, a hundred and ten, uh, a hundred and twenty percent is what it was. Right now, we're continuing to trend down, so the state's ratio for two thousand twenty-one is a hundred and four percent, we could certify up to ten percent higher to make it a hundred and fourteen percent. And that would be my recommendation. There are, uh, roughly, uh, eleven hundred and twenty-four homestead exemptions, actual or estimated right now, um, and as fast practice, uh, to try to get the best reimbursement, the best homestead value for the taxpayer, uh, and the best reimbursement in Betty, I would recommend that we certify a hundred and fourteen percent.
I have a question.
Yep.
Up to what point do we go, like, our ratio would go, that it would force us to do a redial?
We're in good shape for a while.
For a while.
We need seventy percent, huh? Seventy percent?
Yeah, it'd be, the trigger would be seventy percent, and we would never wanna be that low. Some towns, they don't, I don't necessarily say they force a redial on a town, but they kind of urge you to do a revaluation. Uh, I think, once it gets to eighty percent, eighty-five percent, you wanna start thinking about it and being proactive, because it, it's when you finally do it,
It becomes a sticker shock.
It's sticker shock, exactly. And when you get, when you let yourself get to seventy percent, uh, and then somebody gets, you do a revale, somebody, some taxpayers might pay less, and some might pay a lot more. And so, you don't wanna wait that long, because it's, it can be pretty controversial and, and burdensome, um, on the taxpayers, so, um...
The last time, before two thousand eight, I think it was around eighty-four percent, the state wanted us to have a plan.
Yeah.
Because we were going down every year.
Yeah. So we're, we're still in good shape, and we had done our, our last, uh, revale at the peak of the market back in the day, before the recession of Owee, I think, and around there. And so this is why we're kind of still in pretty good shape, uh, we're in very good shape. Conversely, if, if, if we get to a point that the, the certified ratio goes to ninety percent, the re, the homestead calculation will be multiplied by ninety percent, so there'll be a loss of homestead value. So the further you go down, okay, the ratio, uh, the less of a, of a value there is for the homesteader, uh, claiming the homestead exemption.
Okay.
Might, make, make a motion to accept a hundred and fourteen percent ratio?
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second to that?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion carries. Next article is to consider and execute the main DECD Downtown Revitalization Grant Agreement.
So you have, uh, in front of you, I'll, and I have to get to the original, uh, agreement signed before you leave here tonight, the Downtown Revitalization Grant that we were awarded, that the townspeople accepted, and now the next step in the process is, is the phase two, and and basically what is the resolution, uh, to, uh, enter into the contract with the ECD for that three hundred thousand dollar revitalization grant that we're gonna use to remediate the buildings over at the Kmart, uh, shopping center, our Midtown Shopping Plaza, if you know. So, we just need a motion on that. Or, and if you have any questions on that, I'd be willing to answer them.
So, I'll make a motion to, uh, execute the main C C Downtown Revitalization Grant.
Second that.
Seconded by Jason.
Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Against? Motion carries. Is there anything else, Gary?
That is all I have.
That's all you have? Motion to adjourn?
Do we set up a?
Yes.
You'll be on the case from July three to ten?
Uh, no, it might be that long, no? Well, I'm gonna be, uh, I'll be off, uh, July.
I was thinking, uh...
I'll, I'll be back here on the, on the seventh, from July.
The seventh? I was thinking the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Thirteen's open.
I'm open to that.
Okay.
Thirteenth?
Five thirty.
And now for the time. Five thirty.
Five thirty, it must be five thirty, doesn't matter to me.
I'm fine either way.
I work twenty-four days.
Is five o'clock just that hard, or?
It's tight, yeah.
Okay, five thirty on the thirteenth?
Okay. I'm warning you, I, I need a bunch of signatures from you guys.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Chris. Okay, adjourn.